And welcome to the February 19th meeting. Portland City Council, would you please call the roll call?
Fritz?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Saltzman?
Here.
Novick?
Here.
Hales?
Here. Before we begin, Portland lost one of our heroes this week, and we're very sad about the sudden death of Jerome Kersey, one of our great Portland trailblazers and someone who's been an important part of our community life. And in fact, the most recent time I saw Jerome was just a few weeks ago, when characteristically, he was out giving his time to help young men in our community learn the sport of basketball. So if we could, please, let's begin today's discussion with a moment of silence for Jerome Thank you very much. Okay, we have item 195 to take up first.
Appeal of David Van Nadia against the noise variance granted to Anderson Construction for the Unico Overton apartment project located at the block bounded by Northwest 12th Avenue, Northwest Overton Street, Northwest 13th Avenue, and Northwest Petty Grove Street.
Mr. Van Orden is here with a staff presentation.
Thank you, City Council. Paul Van Orden, Noise Control Officer for the city with ONI. Today, for variance number 3501908 on the docket, the variance for Anderson Construction, staff would recommend that we grant the appeal from the neighbors regarding the removal of Sunday work from the conditions of the noise variance that we had approved. And in this case, you may recall from our past hearings that the construction company has been amenable to removing their 10 dates of Sunday work. So on one level, it may be a moot discussion, but staff thinks it will be appropriate to grant the appeal. During our last dialogue, council had directed ONI staff to meet with the appellant, Mr. David Van Nadia, Gwen Semel, Mary Helen Kincaid, along with Assistant Chief Day and Chad Stover from the mayor's office after our last council hearing to explore some potential improvements to the concerns in the Pearl for construction noise. And as a result of that discussion, Assistant Chief Day had committed to working with dispatch to ensure that we had special reports and records of what was happening with construction noise forwarded to the noise office so we could potentially move forward with enforcement action based on officers' observations. Teresa Marchetti and ONI had followed up with dispatch with the police bureau to see if we had had any noise complaints on which we could act. And to date, the noise office does not have any record of complaints in the Pearl with which we could move forward with a violation or examine a potential record of concerns. I think there may be one date that the neighbors had a concern that they did not get the response that they wanted from dispatch, but I don't have a record to really comment on that particular element. The other component of our last discussion was a request from council that we explore improvements to notification with the community in regards to our noise variances. Our initial attempts to improve that system definitely had some good critique from Mary Helen Kincaid, who's here today. And our first attempts were to post a list of variances, and that was a little bit confusing because it was citywide, still fairly short because we're not processing a lot of noise variances this time of year, we're not really in our busy season. And what we decided to switch to is we're now using a system where we post our variances every day when I sign off on those, the internal noise officer variances, and Kathy posts them up online. And then on Fridays, she sends a reminder link to the neighborhood offices that they can find those on ONI's website. We had some dialogues with Mary Helen about that, and it was clear that even within the coalition offices, since this was so new, there was confusion about where that information could be found and where they wanted us to email that over to the coalition offices. So as of today, I've made some calls, and we're going to fine tune who within each one of the coalition offices gets that link. So for instance, in Southeast Uplift, we were sending it to one particular staffer, and the main person in charge has asked that I send them directly to her. So we're making some fine tuning and changes to that to ensure that at least our initial system is received in the coalition offices and that they have an opportunity to disseminate it. More importantly, what we're doing right now is not searchable and not very usable by a citizen. So the long-term goal within ONI is, in moving from BDS over to ONI, we have increased our intake in noise variances a bit, probably primarily because of the increase in construction work. And we think we have some money there to help get someone in to help create a system that's more searchable in the coming months, so that if a citizen wants to look up their particular neighborhood, a street, a particular project, they would have that capacity. Right now, what we're doing is just getting the variances up, so if someone calls us, we can give them a link to the particular variance, and they can just pull it right up online. But until we have something that's more searchable, it's not the most usable system currently. I would also like to report to the council that one of the big items that we examined over the last several hearings on this concept was the idea of what is an appropriate venue for review for noise variances in terms of should the most rudimentary variances always come to city council? And I think that we'll see, within the dialogue of potential code changes coming down the pike in the next several months from the noise review board, that the chair has expressed a willingness to explore this question of what is an appropriate venue of review for the noise variances, and that they'll be undertaking a dialogue of are there some more basic variances that make more sense to go back to the noise review board if I've processed them, or to the code hearings office? So I think that's been a very valuable dialogue because the city is changing. We process between 550 to 600 variances annually, and it may be an appropriate question to explore and bring back to council in terms of a venue of review with the hearings office or the noise review board for more basic noise variances while likely maintaining the most complex noise variances coming back to city council, like the Milwaukee Light Rail projects with TriMet and other large projects. That's the general information I wanted to bring back to council. You may have some questions that I could answer.
Questions for Paul? So again, your recommendation is that we grant the appeal, and that in effect, the request of the appeal has been granted or has been assured, and that by granting the appeal, we enshrine that understanding between the appelleant and the construction company.
Yes, and I think the important note for council is that it just reinforces the tone that what I'm attempting to do as the noise control officer is see what opportunities we have to reinforce the tone that Sundays are a day for respite, not for any particular religious reasons, but because it is a day that is generally commonly accepted as a day when citizens would expect some rest from construction. So I will do my due diligence to carry that over into other variances that I review, as well as the dialogue we've had here about issues in the Pearl.
Any other questions for Paul? Thank you. We wouldn't normally open the record at this point for more testimony, because we have conducted a hearing. I may give Mr. Van Nadia a moment to just briefly come up, and I know Mary Helen Kincaid wanted to. So did you want to speak, Mary Helen? Again, I don't want to relitigate the hearing, but before we take an action on Mr. Van Orden's recommendation, I'll give you just a minute or two to add any thoughts that you might have for us, please.
Hi, thank you. I'm David Van Nadia, and I just have a little thing that I wrote that I'd like to read. It's not very long. I'd like to clear up any confusion for the people who are watching at home. And then I would like to talk about the events that happened since our last meeting, and I'd like to propose a solution. Title 18's policy statement says it is the intent of the city council to minimize the exposure of citizens to the potential negative physiological and psychological effects of excessive noise and protect, promote, and preserve the public health, safety, and welfare. It is the intent of the city council to control the level of noise in a manner that promotes the use, value, and enjoyment of property, conduct of business, sleep, and repose, and reduces unnecessary and excessive sound in the environment. Title 18 Bureau Action states that all city bureaus shall, to the fullest extent consistent with their authorities under other titles administered by them, carry out their programs in such a manner as to further the provisions of this title, and shall cooperate to the fullest extent in enforcing the provisions of this title. And finally, Title 18 Authority of Enforcement says this title shall be enforced by the Office of Neighborhood Involvement and by the Bureau of Police. Duly authorized agents of either of these bureaus should have citation authority for purposes of enforcing this title. And so this title, of course, is Title 18, the Portland's noise control. One month ago, Anderson Construction agreed to not work on Sundays, days which citizens should already have off. So Anderson gave up something they shouldn't have been granted in the first place, and something they claim they never planned to use. One month ago, David Sweet, the noise board chair, said he would restrict construction activity from companies who had logged complaints. Yet, at the past two noise board meetings, he ignored citizen testimony from several different residences and granted multiple construction variances regardless, sometimes without authority. One month ago, Chad Stover from the mayor's office committed to having the city attorney look into noise ordinance, whatever that meant. We never heard from him again. One month ago, Assistant Chief Bob Day committed to try having officers actually respond to noise complaint calls and write special reports, but he refused to do enforcement because noise ordinance confuses police. The Office of Neighborhood Involvement didn't make any commitment. Teresa Marchetti labeled the past month a 30-day trial period. Since we last met, city agents have promised to try to meet the absolute minimum agreements of Title 18 temporarily. From what I can tell, this has been going on for years. Meanwhile, we have what looks like six 5:00 a.m. starts happening at the Anderson-Unico Overton site this week. Five of those days are to erect their tower crane, despite the fact that Anderson does not have a variance for crane activity. Perhaps that's the reason why they scheduled the work after today's hearing, I don't know. We expect at least another 30 5:00 a.m. variance granted starts from them this year alone, and that's not counting any other construction activity in our neighborhood. My wife Gwen and I have invested countless hours. We've communicated with neighbors, developers, construction workers, law enforcement, noise board members, city liaisons, building managers, the noise office, and finally with you, the members of city council. Over the past year, we have made many suggestions about how to improve livability with regard to construction noise. Despite the extreme resistance we've encountered, we haven't given up. In fact, we've come up with a solution that is simple and provides an immediate, effective, balanced, and equitable resolution, and here it is. When there are three or more construction sites located within a two-block radius, and a noise-receiving residence exists and predates the construction within that same radius, the area shall be deemed a concentration area, inside which no work shall take place from 6:00 p.m. on Fridays until Monday mornings. We call this no-work weekends. Here are the benefits. One, there's variances. Variance work can still happen Mondays through Fridays as needed. Construction companies have told us that they need at least a three-day window to plan for variance work. With no-work weekends, they still have five days to do variance-granted, large-volume concrete pours, crane erections, jumps, and dismantling. Livability. At the February noise board meeting, an ODOT construction representative, who is applying for a noise variance, told the board that his workers have better morale and are more productive when they have time off on the weekends. In fact, my wife received an angry response this week from an Anderson employee because she emailed him on a Sunday. So we know that construction workers value their repose as much as we do. Enforcement. Local police can be informed of a concentration area by the noise office and can easily and effectively enforce no-work weekends in that area without confusion or hesitation because there are clear and solid boundaries. And notification, did I mention notification? Basically, we all agree that notification is broken. Construction companies won't or don't notify neighbors, and neighbors can't track construction activity, especially when there's three or more sites in the area. In a concentration area, ongoing company notification requirements would be dropped because the city would announce to the residents that they're in a concentration area, which will be noisy during the week and quiet over the no-work weekends. This sets up realistic, yet fair, expectations. And as far as equity goes, using standard ordinance hours and with no-work weekends enacted, developers and construction companies still have 55 legal workable hours per week, with an additional 30 hours at hand should they apply for a noise variance, bringing the total to 85 available noise-producing work hours per week. If you feel hesitant about taking weekend hours away from construction companies, consider that construction workers often start around 6:00 a.m. each day for staging, removal of fencing, setting up equipment, driving forklifts, receiving deliveries, warming up generator engines, emptying trash dumpsters, or similar such noisy pre-construction activity. In the warm months, when residents have their windows open, the frequency of early starts increase as workers begin to avoid the sun. Remember, you heard about this in October from a citizen who said that she woke up at 5:00 a.m. every morning last summer and put in earplugs so she could attempt to get another hour of sleep. An average daily 6:00 a.m. start means companies are stealing six hours a week from residents, and that's not counting variance workdays. That's time taken from the neighborhood that never gets returned to residents in any way. What are six hours of your time worth? How about six hours of your time per week over the temporary course of two to four years? Since the city won't post an officer in the neighborhood to enforce in the way that police park roadside to enforce speed limits, it is my belief that these unlawful early morning starts would be more tolerable with no-work weekends enacted because residents in a concentration area would have a well-deserved weekly break from the constant compromise of construction noise, dirt, and congestion. Developers and construction companies might not like the sound of no-work weekends, but I'd like to remind them that it's just temporary, and it only happens if there are too many construction sites surrounding people's homes and damaging their livability. And after all, if developers and construction companies don't like having to accommodate neighboring homes, they probably shouldn't be building in a densely populated urban area anyway. Please, don't continue to put this off for another four months while promising to do something that's already supposed to be getting done. Let's do something today. Experiment in my neighborhood, and we'll find out if it works. Or try it in Paul's neighborhood and see how they like it. Or let's do it all over Portland. Maybe we could enact an emergency ordinance. Portland's true Office of Neighborhood Involvement is right here in this chamber, and we're here, we're active, and we're involved. Will you please try this at least for 30 days?
Thank you. Thanks very much. Mary Helen?
I was going to say, but wait, there's more. But I think David aptly described the situation that they're living in, and one of the things that he's asking for is to do something different. In 2001, there was a noise task force, and Mayor Hales, you were on the commission, and the cover letter from Margaret Mahoney says, "We are now working on implementation of the recommendations." Many of those recommendations are the ones that he's asking for. They were asked for about pile drivers, about noise, about better notification, about education. Those weren't implemented. There's been 13 years that they've had an opportunity to implement these things. So I'm suggesting, and I'm going to base this on my good luck, I'm going to, people have said skill, but good luck with the demolition committee that I was able to bring diverse people into a room. We were able to converse, and I was able to convince them to come to us. We didn't have to hire a high-paid consultant. We had staff people, I think that there are some staff people in different bureaus or within ONI that we could bring results. There's nobody that's not wanting to do this. You heard from Paul that he's eager. I was really glad that he listened and mentioned my name on a number of those suggestions that they're working on. Notification is broken. It's kind of screwy, and why notify people in a way that's only going to make them get more frustrated and mad? I think it's time to try something different, because this isn't just about the Pearl. It's going to happen on Division, it's going to happen on Fremont, it's happening on Williams. Spoke with some North Portland people today that are concerned about Lombard and the noise and the density kinds of buildings that are going to happen there, what's going to happen to the neighborhoods that have bled up to that. So I think this is an opportunity to do a good thing. Sure, maybe we'll make recommendations and they won't work. That's happening kind of with the demolition. I don't think you will hear Paul say things that, you know, he's issued more citations. I don't think that's a good thing. If people are getting issued citations, they obviously don't know what the rules are, and if we can educate them to what the rules are, then you don't have to issue citations, and you don't have to get neighbors angry. When he mentioned about the police notification, well, if people don't know, they can complain to the police, and prior to all of this, they didn't, and nobody's told them that they could, of course, nobody's called the police. I mean, that only makes sense. If I don't know that I could do that, I wouldn't. He spoke about the coalition offices. They weren't even informed that they were going to get this information. I checked with them for like three weeks in a row, and they didn't get it. Paul said he talked to people today. That's a really good improvement, because I talked with them Tuesday and gave him that same information. But they're not really that well-equipped. If they get it on Friday, most of the coalition offices are very short-staffed and closed. And so that information's not going to get to anybody till Monday, and so the entire weekend. I suggested that the same kind of notification that BDS uses for land use reviews, just model that behavior. The technology's there, the system's there, there's a best practice of how those people get noticed, the variance gets posted. I don't know what the best venue for granting variances are, but I think smart people in a room could probably determine that. For review, I mean, the Public Works Appeals Panel looks at people that are appealing infrastructure development, and it's a citizen panel and some staff, maybe something similar to that. I think it's time to revisit some of the recommendations that were made 13 years ago, but there's also new ways, because we're 13 years further down the pike, and there's also going to be, again, the whole density issue is going to create these kind of problems in different parts of the neighborhood, and I don't think you want to keep seeing people coming in and appealing variances to noise because they don't like it if we don't find a good solution. So my suggestion is, and I'm willing to help with this, even though I don't want to have to keep coming back here and saying this, but I think we can do it. I think we could put a panel together. I'm willing to work with whoever you decide can be the lead person on this, because it's going to take, I think, a couple bureaus and some bright minds that are in those bureaus to bring some ideas together, so that we can make it better for the residents in the Pearl, and then those people that might be affected further down the road. So I'd like to see if anything comes out of this appeal, that the recommendation is that, yes, grant the appeal, but that's not going to solve all the other inherent problems, and there's skills to be had in other places that can be utilized to make this whole situation better. So that's how I came into this, that's my whole goal and recommendation. Thank you. Let me say that.
Thank you both. Any questions for either Mr. Van Nadia or our amazing volunteer, Mary Helen? All right, thank you both. Thanks very much.
May I make a motion to accept the appeal as was presented by Paul?
Second, and Mayor, I'd like to ask, what do you see as the next steps?
Yeah, well, let's take a roll call in a minute on the motion to grant the appeal, but I think we do need to review our code. I think this case and the situation in general that you've helped highlight has illustrated that we've got some problems in the code as it now stands, and there are places where I think our code needs to be stronger, and you've come up with a creative suggestion here. I'm not sure if that's where we'll end up, but it's a good one. But I think between Paul Van Orden and the noise review board and staff in my office, we'd be prepared to support that kind of consortium effort. Call on some people like Mary Helen, who are willing to help.
One thing I forgot, and I just saw in my notes, because when I went by it, I forgot what J.D. meant. Jackie Dingfelder has been instrumental in helping, tried to bring these things together. And I think she has the wherewithal to help guide it as well. I don't know if she's watching this on TV, she might slap me if she hears me saying that.
I think both Jackie and Chad are prepared to work on this.
Yeah, so I would just like to see some sort of action that says, yes, form a committee, and we can move forward, because otherwise, we're going to be 13 years more down the road with recommendations that aren't implemented, and I don't think you want that to happen.
That's your intent, Mayor.
That's my intent. Is that a good idea?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So thank you. We will proceed. All right, then, let's take a roll call on the motion to grant the appeal.
Fritz?
Well, thank you, Mr. Van Nadia, and Gwen, your wife, and all of the neighbors who testified on this. It's been a while, and I would come to a good conclusion. I appreciate the work of Paul Van Orden and the noise office in the Office of Neighborhood Involvement. With the direction from the mayor that he's going to form a task force, and with the understanding from the noise office that they should be very reluctant to grant any more variances on Sundays at least, and certainly do consideration, I think, to Saturdays as well, until we get maybe to a new policy, I'm glad to support the motion. Aye.
Fish?
I think this has been a very good discussion. I appreciate that we're going to move forward to address the underlying issues. And as I mentioned to Mary Helen earlier today, having an active construction site next to my house has been an educational experience, and I think there are a number of issues we need to get right and better. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I will support granting this appeal. I do strongly believe that we need to provide our residents some certainty about when they can count on quiet zones or quiet times. So I like the suggestion of a no-work weekend, and I think that's something that this committee will consider, along with a lot of the other good ideas that came forward in 2001 that didn't get implemented. But I think it's very important, probably more important today than it is in 2001, given the growing population of our city and the growing density. So we need to learn to be good neighbors with each other. Aye.
Novick?
I really appreciate that people are bringing thoughtfulness and creativity to this issue, and I think it's been demonstrated Mary Helen Kincaid can solve any problem, no matter how naughty, so I'm glad that she's stepping forward to do that. I'm actually going to vote against granting the appeal because it's sort of a process-y reason, which is that if we need to change the rules, we should change the rules, but until we change the rules, my tendency would be to defer to our citizen boards, like the noise advisory board. I think that they're the most appropriate venue to resolve these disputes until such time as we choose to change the rules. So in light of that, I would vote to deny the appeal.
Hales?
Well, sometimes we learn from contested cases where the system needs improvement, and I think that's been the case here. So I appreciate your perseverance in bringing this issue to us in a particular case. But again, I want to call on talented staff, not only in the bureau, but also in my office to work with folks in the community that want to dig into this. I do need to go back and read that document from 2001 and see what remains on that list. I'm not interested in a shelf study again, so we should come up with things that we want to actually change, and change them. You know, I reflected on this again the other day when I was running for mayor three years ago. There were two cranes on the, on the horizon anywhere in Portland, and they were both for public works projects. Now there are a lot more, and some of them are pretty close to each other, and some of them are close to people that moved in before the cranes were there. So, you know, we had a recession in between 2001 and now and maybe lulled us into a false sense of security that the rules that we had would be sufficient for a boom. We're in a boom now and we're going to be in one for a while. So Mr. Sweet and others that serve on this board are going to probably be busy. But I think the question is going to be busy with what rules. So we will work on that. Thank you. Aye. Okay. Let's take the next, if you would read the next three items, please.
Item 196. The City of Portland shall not enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Federal Bureau of Investigation related to the work of the Joint Terrorism Task Force and shall repeal binding city policy BCP-PSF-7.01. 197. The City of Portland shall, shall enter into a memorandum of understanding to become a member of the local Joint Terrorism Task Force in conjunction with the Federal Bureau of Investigation and shall repeal binding city policy BCP-PSF-7.01. Item 198. Enter into a memorandum of understanding to become a member of the local Joint Terrorism Task Force in conjunction with the Federal Bureau of Investigation.
Thank you. Well, let me first set the stage again for those that maybe, I don't think there's anyone here that's new to this discussion. But we wanted to set this up as two clearly articulated alternatives for the council, given that the, in my mind, and I think in, in all of our minds, the current arrangement that we've had for our work with the Federal Bureau of Investigation on terrorist issues has not been satisfactory in that we didn't have the level of participation that some asked for, and we didn't have the level of clarity and communication back to the city that I would expect. So we tried to put this on the table before the council in a, in an obvious and clear dichotomy, and then let the community come in and give us their opinions. And we have certainly heard from a lot of people on this issue and heard some strong feelings. And I have to tell you, this has probably been the most, one of the most difficult decisions for me to address while I've been on the council this time. The first time around, when this came before the council, I voted against participating. And there are very good reasons for that opinion. And in fact, there are things that still weigh strongly in my mind towards not participating. And there's also now some very strong and compelling arguments on the other side. And I, I want to take the prerogative of the chair and in a moment, take up first number 197, which is the memorandum to participate. Because I believe in my own mind, after weighing all this, that we should participate. But that we should with some very clear caveats and understandings among ourselves. Let me start. Again, I'll, I'll go ahead and make my statement now at the outset rather than waiting to the end when I vote. As I said, there are strong feelings on both sides of this issue and in my own heart and my own mind. There are two words that I think my dilemma about this issue have revolved around. One is ashamed and the other is appalled. I'm ashamed as an American that we have been involved in wars without justification, in prisons without trials, and in torture. I hate to even say those words. I have not too much trouble making decisions in this job, but sometimes I'm up late at night. And lately, when I've been up late at night, I've been watching Ken Burns' series about World War II. And the moral clarity that we as a country had at the end of that war contrasts so appallingly, again, that word, with what we have done lately in the world, that it makes it very difficult for me to contemplate cooperating with the federal government. Because I think much of what has been done, unfortunately, in the last several administrations has cost us moral authority in the world and violates principles that I really believe in as an American. So I am ashamed. And many federal agencies have been complicit in those wrongs, including the FBI. The other word is appalled. And I'm appalled by the radical evil that is loose in the world today. I'm appalled at what has happened to innocent people. We were all appalled in September, on September 11th, when our country was attacked. And that was an attack by terrorists on symbols of American power that murdered a lot of innocent people. Maybe there were some of us here in Portland who could have thought then, well, that was an attack on the symbols of American power. It may not affect us here in Portland. But most recently, the attacks in Paris and Copenhagen and Boston are incidents in which people, we call them terrorists, attacked their own communities and murdered their neighbors. And I think any conceit that we might be exempt from that radical evil here is unfortunately removed by what happened in those places. So that's the dilemma that faces me and each of us as members of this council. And I know we've all agonized over this decision. We've also heard from the community about, about the downside of participating in any kind of arrangement with the FBI because, again, of fear, legitimate fear, based on historical injustice and recent mistakes and misconduct in this and other federal agencies. We've heard from the Muslim community on both sides of this issue, some who see the value in joining and some who don't want us to join, and a real cry for us to develop a sound relationship with this and each of the communities in our city. So I think we've all heard and taken to heart those concerns. A couple of things that pull me towards the reluctant decision that we should participate in this partnership with the Federal Bureau of Administration. One, we already do on many other fronts. We have cooperative arrangements with the FBI on, on child exploitation, on human trafficking, on bank robbery, on gangs. We work with the FBI constantly, and that's a natural and normal thing in a metropolitan area that's part of a country and with a state line close by. And the same thing is true, of course, in other areas of criminal activity like terrorism. So the question is, will we be safer if we share information or will we be less safe because people will fear our relationship with the FBI? And I think there's some things that we can do in this arrangement and some people that we can rely on that, again, make this a marginally justifiable decision. One is I have complete confidence in Larry O'Day as my police chief and as our police chief and as somebody who reflects Portland's values. This man is all about the relationship between the police bureau and our community. And I do believe that he completely reflects our values about civil liberties and trust as the basis for policing. So I know that I can rely on him. And then I've asked him for some things if we were to make this decision, and he's, he enthusiastically agrees that this is what we should do. And that is, if we decide to join the Joint Terrorism Task Force, the chief of police and I are going to sit down with the officers who would be assigned to this work and personally instruct them in, in what is expected and required of them if we do. One is that they will follow the law and they will follow our policies as a city and that they will follow the values of the community that they serve. And if there ever comes a moment when their values and those instructions conflict with working in cooperation with the Federal Bureau of Administration, they are not only encouraged, they are required to come to the chain of command for which they work. The chief of police for the City of Portland and the police commissioner for the City of Portland, and to let us know that there's a conflict between what they're being asked to do and what Portlanders would want them to do and how they would want them to do it. And that their, their performance as a Portland police officer and their future as a Portland police officer will be assured by sticking to our values if there's ever a conflict. And I believe that if we give those instructions to the right officers, that they'll be followed. Secondly, you've heard my criticism, and I've heard a lot of people's criticisms of the Federal Bureau of Investigation. I do believe that Greg Bretzing, the current special agent in charge for Portland, is a man of integrity and someone who will be honest with me. I've met this man, I've spoken with him, I've questioned him closely. And I believe that he personally, I'm not talking about the organization, I'm talking about him personally, I believe that he personally is someone who will be truthful with me and who is a person of integrity. And if you can't believe that in any business, then you're going to have a difficult time doing your job. So I believe that we can rely on that. And further, we're going to make sure that there are safeguards in place and they're here in terms of our officers seeking legal advice from the city attorney about Oregon law, about our city attorney periodically training these officers, and about me as the commissioner in charge of the police bureau, under a nondisclosure agreement, getting much more complete information about what our officers are doing. My standard will be if I'm not sure that our officers are performing in ways that we as a city would want them, then I'll come back to this council with the opposite resolution and ask that we withdraw. But I think, given what's loose in the world and what's been the harm that's already done to innocent people in places like Boston, that as your police commissioner, this is the right decision for me in good conscience to make. So that's why I will support on this controlled basis, for now, with these people, this arrangement. So that's my suggestion to us as a council for what we do today. Again, we'll take a vote on, on, we can take both of, both of these for that matter, but my recommendation is we proceed to take a vote on 197 and if we approve it, 198. So council.
Questionnaire. What happens when the person assigned to be in charge of the FBI here is a different person?
I will, I will want to very carefully take that person's measure and see if I still have the same level of confidence, because this is partly personal for me. I do rely on Larry and Larry O'Day, Chief Larry O'Day. And I believe in his values, as I said, I've.
No, I'm talking about the FBI.
No, I know. And I've gotten to know Greg Bretzing a little. And as I said, my, my instincts tell me I'm dealing with a person of integrity who will tell me the truth and who understands what Portland expects in this arrangement. If I ever, if I ever have reason to question that assessment about him or about his successor, then it will be time to reconsider this decision.
Mayor Hales? You've exercised the prerogative of the chair, so we're taking up 197 first. You've also exercised the prerogative of chair of, of essentially casting the first vote.
Yes.
So you intend to cast the vote and then go back to the regular order?
Yes.
And I would support that.
Okay. So would the council like to have any more discussion before we take a roll call on?
197.
On 197? Okay, then let's do, please.
Fritz?
We had an opportunity here today to create more confidence within our community. I don't believe with this action that we are doing that. Everyone here on this council and everybody here in this chamber is committed to public safety here in our city. The question is, how do we get, best get there? Casey Jama of the Center for Intercultural Organizing said at the hearing, "We could pursue a different strategy, one that relies on the community rather than suspecting the community." He talks of the Somali youth that he works with and said, "The way to win hearts and minds is not targeting them and making them feel like they are suspects." I grew up in England during the IRA bombings. So that was back in the, in the 60s and 70s, long before people in this country felt unsafe going to a grocery store or a pub or a place of travel. I was in Europe the summer of 2001 and was really pleased to see the dog sniffing guns at the airport in, in Paris, found the little metal statue that my son had in his carry-on suitcase and were able to dig out the little mannequin pea and find out that in fact it was a little statue and not a gun. And I was very used to in railway stations looking around to see whether any unattached belongings, because I had a friend in grade school whose brother was killed by the IRA in Ireland. And we had the center of Manchester blown up. And it's, Manchester's about the same distance as Salem is from here to my hometown. And yet we relied on community to make sure that when people were about to do bad things, that we found out about it. And there were a number of terrorist activities which were dissuaded because people could trust the police to be working to keep everybody safe. We have a lot of trust issues. And I think, to me, that's the most urgent need that we have here. Yes, there are threats from terrorism. There are also threats from our community members not being able to trust us, the elected officials, and not being able to trust their government. So no, I don't support this.
Fish?
Thank you. And because of the seriousness of this issue, I've, I have written down my remarks and I would ask people's indulgence for the formality. Today, I vote aye on council number 197 to fully rejoin the Joint Terrorist Task Force. Why? Because I believe that we can strengthen public safety and security without sacrificing Oregon values. In 2011, following a lengthy and thoughtful, community-wide debate, I supported a compromise approach. The Portland Police Bureau would rejoin the JTTF on an as-needed basis. In spite, in spite of the best efforts of all involved, it did not work out as planned. As city commissioner, I take very seriously my duty to keep Portlanders safe, all Portlanders. Since 2011, the world has become an even more dangerous place. We have been witness to senseless violence, both domestic and foreign. And as the mayor reminds us, recent terror attacks in Boston, Paris, and Copenhagen are stark reminders that freedom requires vigilance at home and abroad. Every other major city in America, including New York and San Francisco, participates in the JTTF. As former and current police chiefs and U.S. attorneys explain to me, we are safer when local, state, and federal law enforcement share information and talk to each other on a regular basis. And when our trained Portland police officers are at the table, they help guide investigations consistent with our values. As a former civil rights lawyer, I also take very seriously my responsibility to protect our cherished constitutional freedoms and liberties. At a recent council hearing, critics of the JTTF raised concerns about the erosion of constitutionally protected privacy, the legacy of the FBI, and our ability to ensure compliance with Oregon law prohibiting the random collection of data on Oregonians outside of a criminal investigation. These are important concerns, and we must enter any new relationship with our eyes wide open. We do not have to sacrifice accountability in order to participate in the JTTF. Police Chief Larry O'Day has stated his preference to post two highly-trained police officers with the JTTF supervised by a sergeant and all reporting to the chief and the mayor. The chief has secret clearance, while the mayor can access all relevant information under the terms of a standard nondisclosure agreement. The city attorney would provide regular legal advice to the chief and the mayor, as well as training on Oregon law to Portland police officers. I believe this ensures the proper chain of command. Effective community policing is based on strong relationships between community members and federal, state, and local law enforcement partners. Portland police officers already work closely and effectively with federal law enforcement in numerous task forces. The mayor alluded to them. And they include the FBI Child Exploitation Task Force, Safe Streets Task Force, and the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Task Force. The task force model strengthens community policing by coordinating multiple resources to focus on some of our most difficult public safety issues. Whether we are addressing the national problem of child sex trafficking or domestic terrorism, I believe we are stronger when we all work together. Finally, today's JTTF. Finally, today's JTTF is supervised by the Obama Justice Department, not Bush, Cheney, or Ashcroft. Speaking to the JTTF in New York, our president said, quote, "Together, your success in thwarting terrorist attacks, the strong intelligence you've gathered, and the hard-nosed investigations you've pursued, has proved to be a model for law enforcement officials across the country." I believe the time has come to fully join with the JTTF. Portlanders rightly expect that protecting their safety is a fundamental responsibility of their mayor and the city council. And I believe we can meet that responsibility and safeguard civil liberties by joining the JTTF. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I want to start out by saying that I appreciate the discussion we've had here today. I do believe that we should participate in the Joint Terrorism Task Force, and that it helps fulfill the obligation each one of us has on this dais to keep Portlanders safe. We are one city among hundreds in the United States, and we must do our part to prevent terrorism here and abroad. Certainly, the events of the last five or six weeks, people being murdered for no good reason, other than they were in the wrong place at the wrong time, or because they happen to share my faith of being Jewish. In Paris, four people murdered because they're Jewish. In Copenhagen, one person murdered because they're Jewish. Now, it should come as no surprise that those of us who are Jewish feel maybe like we're always looking over our shoulder, because throughout our history, we have suffered. Right or left, antisemitism is alive and well in this world. And synagogues in Portland spend an ungodly amount on security for Saturday services or special events. And so I feel every day a sense of insecurity. And I feel that we owe it to every citizen who is Jewish, every resident of the city, regardless of their faith. We must participate with our federal resources, with our other law enforcement agencies, to ensure Portlanders are safe. And as I said, it's not just Portlanders. What can happen here in Portland can have ramifications in Chicago, Los Angeles, or New York. We're only as good as our weakest link, and Portland should not be that weak link. I believe there's some question whether our police officers rightly understand the Oregon Constitution, state law, federal law. I would argue, nobody possesses more encyclopedic knowledge of state, local, and federal laws than our police officers. That's what their job is, is to understand the laws, and their knowledge of them is encyclopedic. I think with the directions that Mayor Hill and Chief O'Day will give to the two officers assigned, that's only going to be more the case. They're going to be watching out for our civil liberties, making sure Oregon law, Oregon Constitution, and civil rights are respected. So I think this is what it's all about. It's about working together to keep all of us safer. And I strongly, and I want to laud the mayor for looking at this position closely enough, and having the courage, frankly, and the will to reverse a decision you made earlier in your career, and find that this is, times have changed, circumstances have changed, we live in a much more dangerous environment, and we need to act on behalf of the safety of all of us. So I'm very pleased to vote aye.
Novick?
I think I've wrestled with this issue over the past few weeks, as much as the mayor has, and as a consequence, I fear I'm going to make one of my longest votes. And like Commissioner Fish, on this occasion, I'm actually going to read a statement. I do not dismiss the threat of terrorism. I once tried a case in the courthouse next to the Oklahoma City Federal Building that was subsequently blown up by domestic terrorists. I think that in the abstract, the idea of local law enforcement with their broader and deeper knowledge of the community, working with the FBI on this and other issues, is a good one. I've met with Special Agent in Charge Greg Bretzing and his leadership staff, and I think they're good, well-intentioned people. I was impressed by the argument that if we have police in the JTTF, they are in a position to raise concerns about FBI operations that seem inconsistent with Portland values. And I'm very encouraged by what the mayor just said about the conversations that he expects to have with anyone who is assigned to the JTTF. In short, I think there are strong arguments for joining the JTTF. I also think there is a strong argument against joining the JTTF. One of the main arguments for having Portland police in the JTTF is the police have a broader knowledge of our community and stronger relationships in the community. We have heard from representatives of some communities in our city that joining the JTTF would weaken the relationship they have with the police, and formally leaving the JTTF would strengthen those relationships. Received a letter very recently, that was signed by leaders of the Islamic Center of Portland, the Islamic Society of Greater Portland, the Muslim Community Center of Portland, Bosniak's Education and Cultural Organization, the Oregon Muslim Citizen Alliance, the Islamic Community Center of Hillsborough, the Oregon Islamic Chaplains Organization, and the Muslim Educational Trust and Islamic Social Services of Oregon State. And I'd like to read the letter. Mayor Hill and Portland City Commissioners, we, the undersigned, represent Portland-area mosques, Muslim organizations, community groups that serve predominantly Muslim-American constituents. We are also members of the Committee to Establish the Shura Council of Oregon and Southwest Washington, an interfaith coordinating body concerned with political, social, economic, and cultural matters affecting Muslim-Americans residing in the greater Portland metro area. We understand that the Portland City Council is considering whether to rejoin the Joint Terrorism Task Force. We fully support all law enforcement efforts to prevent and prosecute acts of terrorism within our country. That is why our community organizations have participated in and supported involvement in the FBI's Citizen Advisory Council, and the Arab and Muslim Portland Police Advisory Council, formed in 2001 by former police chief Mark Croker and Dr. Nahad Tolan. No community has been more affected by terrorism than ours. The majority of victims of acts of terrorism committed in the name of Islam have been Muslim. Moreover, acts of terrorism in the United States and abroad have resulted in Islamophobic hate crimes against the Muslim community, including arson attacks at our places of worship, and execution-style murders such as occurred in North Carolina recently. At this time, however, we firmly believe that local law enforcement participation in the JTTF is counterproductive to the city's most important law enforcement mission, which is the prevention of crime through community and local law enforcement partnerships. As individual organizations, we have been engaging with and will continue to engage with federal law enforcement to prevent acts of terrorism in our community. However, because of the gross mishandling of a number of high-profile cases by federal authorities affecting Muslims in the Portland area, and the systematic profiling and surveillance of Muslims nationally, we believe that the city's participation in the JTTF may actually discourage members of our community from reporting suspected criminal activity. We believe crime prevention in Portland is better served by strengthening and fostering ties between local law enforcement and Muslim organizations. Therefore, we request that the Portland City Council discontinue the ties between the Portland Police Bureau and the JTTF. The Portland Police Bureau should reestablish ties with AMPAK and the Shura Council, which is in its forming stage. Now, I know that not all Muslims in the Portland area feel the same way. We received a letter from the Somali Council of Oregon urging us to join the JTTF. And I know that the FBI might take issue with some of the statements in that letter. But I cannot ignore the fact that the leaders of numerous organizations in the Muslim community say that many Muslims do not trust the FBI, and would trust the Portland police less if we joined the JTTF. I do not want to take the risk that people might not warn us of real potential threats because they don't trust us. I'm also encouraged by the message that these Muslim and Arab leaders are interested in reviving AMPAK, especially withdrawing from JTTF. And I think we should take them up on that, and I hope that they'll be willing to do that, even if we join the JTTF. If my view had prevailed today, I would not have expected it to be necessarily the last time we would take up this issue. As I said, I was very impressed with Special Agent in Charge Bretzing, and I expect that he will be working to strengthen the FBI's relationships with communities throughout Portland, including the Arab and Muslim communities. And I could imagine that a year or two from now, it might be possible for Portland police to join the JTTF without raising these concerns from the Muslim community. I also want to reiterate that this has been a very difficult decision for me, and I've been reading letters and making phone calls up to today. A couple of hours ago, I had a conversation with Laura Dugan, who's a criminology professor at the University of Maryland, the former colleague of my wife's, who's also a member of the National Center for the Study of Terrorism and Response to Terrorism. And she said that, other things being equal, she would recommend being part of the JTTF. When I told her about the opinions of a significant segment of the Muslim community, she said, "Well, the community relationships are critically important." Although she did say, and I should repeat here, that even if we're not in the JTTF, we could participate in disaster preparedness exercises with the FBI," which she said that the fact that the Boston police had done that repeatedly in Boston made a big difference in the aftermath of the Boston Marathon bombing. So I think that this is an extremely difficult decision. I really appreciate what the mayor said about how he intends the city to operate if we join the JTTF. I respectfully vote nay.
Hill?
Thank you. Let's move on. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to 198. And we do need to take action on 198, given that 197 has passed.
198. Roll call. Fritz?
Mayor, actually, before you take the roll call, I was wondering, did others on the council know how you plan to vote today?
No, I don't believe so.
Because I didn't, and so I haven't really looked through the details of the memorandum. So I think that there should be additional comments or abilities to look into the memorandum, because I think that most people in the community were focused on in or out, rather than the details of the memorandum.
I don't mind setting that over for a week. I don't think there's any reason. Chief, any reason that we can't wait a week on the memorandum itself? Okay.
And take some comments on that, if anybody in the community would like to comment.
Yeah, we had a hearing on all three.
I guess that people have three minutes to talk about all three, so...
Well, then, I'll leave the record open on the ordinance itself, and if people want to write to each of us about that, fine. And again, to give the council an opportunity to look back through the memorandum itself, and to make sure that it captures both the spirit and the substance of what we've talked about here today.
Thank you.
Okay. So I will continue that for one week, and then if there's no objection, I'll return 196 to my office.
Mayor, in light of the interest this issue has generated, could we put this on as a time certain, next Wednesday or Thursday, so that anyone who chooses to come has some certainty of our time?
Okay. What's available, Carla?
We could do next Thursday, the 26th, at 3:30.
Work? Okay, that's ordered, and we adjourn until next week. Thank you all very much.